Folks, but I don't see them and we're ready to start, so I think we'll just jump right in. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. I know the topic we have to discuss this evening is about four years old now and we've made several attempts at trying to solve this problem. We haven't got there yet, but that's no reason to quit now. So, that's kind of why we're all together tonight. I'm just gonna ask that, as difficult as it is, I know, and as much emotion and effort as everybody's put into this thing already, that tonight, when we take a look at this, we just kind of use fresh eyes. Sometimes, when you have a really difficult task in front of you, the best way to do is just go back to the basics. So, we're getting pretty basic tonight. We're really just going to discuss exactly what's on the agenda. We have time at the beginning for the folks who've showed up here from the public to speak. You all have five minutes to say what you want to say at the beginning of the meeting. And then, as we started to the agenda items, I thought, for the sake of everyone's time, so that this doesn't take us all night long, I thought we'd try to be organized and just speak one person at a time. And the best way I know to do that is just to start at one end of the table and allow each person down the line a chance to say what they want to say. No one should feel like you have to say anything. If you don't have anything to say, feel free to just let me know that and just move right along to the next person. No big deal. We'll do that for each agenda item, so that everyone has a chance to speak. And then, after we've been around the room, I'll, one last time for anyone who wants to say something that maybe was not brought up. And then, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Okay? So, it'll be a little bit orderly that way. And that way, hopefully, we can get out of here as close to seven o'clock. We absolutely have to stop at 7:30 because our minute taker will along to be with us. So, 7:30 is a hard stop, for sure. With that, I guess we will jump right in then to the first item on the agenda, which is time for public participation. I see several folks there in the back. Anyone who wants to participate, feel free.
Where do you want us, Corey?
There's a pony, but if you do there, you're gonna face the wall, so I guess...
I might be better doing that. Well, first, just thank you guys for putting this together. You know, I know there's a lot of people that are appreciative of the communication and the involvement leading up to this meeting. This being included, you know, this public participation piece. So, kudos to you guys. I see that as a positive sign moving forward with this. You know, like you said, that's an ongoing deal that we need to address. So, before we dive too far into it, just a few items that I'd like everyone to consider. So, I'll just jump into it. Number one, you know, the mutual understanding that the Park Board doesn't need an economic development sales tax, just as this economic development sales tax is not needed by the Park Board. You know, it's kind of symbiotic. They don't, they can exist independently, they can coexist. So, we don't need this, a sales tax from the economic development standpoint to build pool, refurbish a pool, whatever. This, you know, and Cameron doesn't need the pool to pass an economic development sales tax. So, they're two entities, so I just, you know, I talked to some people that were kind of, you know, just as early as the chili supper we were having tonight. One guy was asking me about it, and he thought that they were just, they had to be the same. In fact, they're two entities in and of themselves. Of course, we can combine them, but, so, what I would suggest is just, you know, let's look at simplifying these plans to address our pools and let the economic development piece maybe work on its own. Second thing, the Park Board and the city, you guys can join together and fund a pool plan. You know, as we discussed the other day, Corey, there are two one-eighths available. The city's one-eighth will generate about $150,000 per year, is what I'm told. And granted, there might be an emergency where $150,000 in a year is needed, but I have every faith in our council and our city manager, the department heads, that, you know, they could find $150,000 to address an emergency need if they had to. Finally, maybe the most pressing to me was that there's never been language on this topic that guarantees how many dollars will go into a pool project. The statute, again, I'm an attorney, I just play one sometimes. The statute says, you know, at least 20% must be spent on economic development, but it does not place a cap on how much it can be spent on economic development. So, as such, you know, the Park Board is not guaranteed the plans that you might present will necessarily be manifest in what is ultimately built, you know, renovation or new, either way. So, I, you know, I thought of a scenario, what if there was a $3 million pool plan put forward? And the voters said, "Yeah, I like that pool. That's great, let's do it." And then, a more urgent thing came up, you know, land, or we need to build this building, or what have you. And some of those dollars were allocated away from the pool into that plan. That puts the Park Board in a pretty awkward position, because the Park Board takes front and center on these plans and shows the public what's being planned and so forth. So, you know, the five-member board makes their recommendation, the city council approves those, you know. Just because we have a rendering of what a pool could look like doesn't mean that's what it will look like. So, again, 20% is the minimum that must be spent. There is no maximum without assurances that the ballot language will establish that, meant that maximum, and guarantee the Park Board those dollars. I would just say, you know, act independently, guys. I mean, you guys did that, you invested a lot of time, a lot of effort in developing of what appeared to be a pretty solid plan several years ago. It was a good plan, and I think if it had moved forward, we'd be enjoying the fruits of that labor right now. So, whatever decision you make tonight with regard to refurbish a new pool, you know, or this month with regards to refurbishing a pool, building a new pool, I would encourage you to just act independently, using, you know, Corey, you've listed a bunch of good stuff there on the agenda. Take those viable ideas, run with one, combine a few, and I would just say with the exception of the half-cent sales tax. So, that's about all I got. Thank you, Corey.
Thank you. What else? That's it? Okay. Then, we will begin here. Again, I've tried to arrange this and have some organization to it, so that we don't spend all night discussing these things. What we're really trying to do here is just build a list of pros and cons. I know it's very basic, but that's really what we want to try to do. So, if we can, we'll start going around the room. Bill, if you don't mind, starting us off on agenda item number one there. This agenda item has to do with whether or not we should spend money repairing the existing swimming pool, or whether we should replace what is there. Pros and cons, one on the other.
Well, I can start on either side of that. I mean, a con of repairing the pool is, it's been documented in the past, the cost alone just to refurbish the bath house, the basin, and you're already looking, what was it, a million and a half? Just to do that, and you still have pretty much an old pool. And it still doesn't meet a lot of the requirements that you would need in today's environment for the public. So, I've been pretty clear about it. My pool, I would not want to ever refurbish the pool. Just, it's just not, to me, it'd be like taking an old car and dumping 10,000 in it when it's only worth two. It just doesn't make any sense after a while, so I think we're to the point where we need a new pool. The bath house, we made it public last meeting. You know, you're working upwards of a quarter million dollars just to redo the bath house, just to make a few items that it'd take you to accessible. So, why do that and still have an old pool? So, I mean, I just, I personally, I just don't see any pros of maintaining a 35-year-old pool. Just one opinion, but that's where I stand on it.
I agree with both, same thing. We've discussed it numerous times, but it's just become a mine pit. So, it's gonna get to the point where we're gonna have to shut the doors someday if we can't afford to build a new one.
I also agree. We have discussed that the million and a half would give us about 10 years' life on it, and that would be about it. And then, we're right back into that same spot again in 10 years. So, to me, it seems more feasible to go ahead and build a new pool versus the band-aid of a million and a half.
Thank you.
I repeat, all the above. There's no point in putting all that money in it, and it's not going to fix it for the long run.
We have batted this back and forth, like we say, four or five years to try to repair this putting a band-aid on an open wound. It just won't work. The Park Board recently okayed the repair of the slide at $7,000, but again, this is temporary. We either shut the doors, like Jennifer said, or somehow work out to build a new pool.
Now, the pros are, well, the renovation is, we can use our eighth cent sales tax alone and do the renovation of the basin and the bath house. So, it can be done, and that is a pro, is we can fix it. The con is that, yes, in 10 years, what we're setting on these boards is gonna have the very same problem to deal with, and we would be going back to the public and saying we need more funds. But we're just gonna say we just did that. You know, what we get out of it, it's the same thing as what we had, and it was all said and done, except for it was A.D.-compliant and a little more stable. So, I personally don't agree with the idea of just trying to repair. I think we need to replace. I think we've put somebody else in the same situation that we're in now.
Not being on the Park Board, but being on EDOC, you know, we've looked at this over four years and have not seen where pools changed its condition probably, you know, of course, in each time. So, you know, from my point, from the EDOC side, we were just trying to find a way to get a new pool and hope that somewhere, somebody's got a plan that can do that.
I don't have anything on that issue, but Patrick, our city attorney, is here for more when we get on the funding options, so we'll be able to try to address those. And also, Councilmember Patrick's over here, so we will get to the, we'll get...
Andrew Jones.
Oh, Joe's here, yeah.
Okay. We're gonna give you guys the chair. Don't let me overlook you. Stop me, bud. Okay. So, I'm on here.
It's your turn. I have to say that I respect the Park Board and their realization of the pool. I've said in several meetings, in several of their meetings, and I know what they've talked about and what they're actually facing down the line. The same, I'm studying on EDOC, and I'm a long-range planner. I have to look down the road a long ways. I feel like that EDOC was actually looking for funding because that pool wasn't, is important, was important, will be important to the city, it can, or the community it serves. So, whatever we can do to make it a reality, to make it go, is important to do that. Here again, I just want to say I do respect the Park Board and their decisions on what they do. That's so important.
Okay. For myself, I think one of, personally, one of the cons for spending $1.5 million to repair a pool for 10 years is that I'm not, I'm not sure that anticipated lifespan actually outlasts the debt burden that goes along with having to get the $1.5 million bonded. So, that option hasn't really ever made much sense to me. Personally, I'd love to see us work together, try to find a funding option that can build a pool that lasts for 30 years, that can be paid for in 20. Because then, I think you've paid an asset off with 10 years left that you can, 10 years left that you can use to plan, like Mike said, for the future, so that we don't end up back here in 30 years struggling with how to do this again.
I don't have any opinion. I mean, the Park Board knows what they're doing. Have you done it? No. Yeah, I'm just here as a member, not a member, but an employee of EDOC, and the only thing is, under the funding options, I actually have dealt with all one of those. I mean, I've actually dealt with all of the chip listed, but in the subcategories, I've dealt with all of them with such ones. So, I just kind of have a working idea of how these options, I keep to pay it, will work.
To me, it makes more sense to replace it, though I don't have any information on it.
A staff member for the city, so that's a good list.
I'm a planner, so I think we should look to the future.
I personally, I was kind of writing jotty little notes over here. A pro is, it brings, we lose a lot of revenue sending our people elsewhere to other communities who have better pools. I mean, they go and they eat in these other communities, they do other things in neighboring areas, so we lose a lot of people who are looking for stuff to do with their kids. So, a pro for me would be to bring our community folks back to our community to spend money, rather than send them elsewhere because we lack opportunity for kids. And even if we repair our currently, you know, our current pool, it doesn't, it doesn't beckon to all age groups. You know, we've heard those pool planners say that there's nothing for, you know, infants and toddlers. There's not, you know, anything for adults to do. There's no, you know, lazy river or anything like that. I'd rather see that revenue stay. I'd rather invite more people to town. I mean, that's something that no one has said so far, and I think that's a huge, huge factor in our system, and it should be.
I have to agree with that. I mean, I know that my family goes to Chillicothe. They've got a pool, and they've got a nice, a nice setup, and there's something for the kids to do. And I never really looked at it till we got into this discussion. And like I said, there's really nothing for the toddlers. You've gotta stay with them, you know, the whole time. As they get a little bit bigger, they're still not big enough to turn them loose, and then you're still babysitting them in the big part of the pool. You know, and people want more. They don't want, they don't want fitness technology, sixties technology. They want, you know, they want, and I can't see any way that we can, I mean, I think whoever actually engineered and built that pool that helped jobs is set it in here on a hill, and it's still there. You know? But if you drop one and a half million dollars, a third of the fee, to try to get 10 years, I just, I excuse you.
I'd echo that. We have a 10-year-old, and we've been to Chillicothe in the last several years, a number of times. And I have never been over there, but I have not seen other Cameron people utilizing their pool and leaving their money there. The other thing that I would follow up on is, the Park Board has done a remarkable job. And we're talking about citizen volunteers, they don't get paid a cent, and they go on to meeting after meeting after meeting for between, well, we're only at five years on this. And the conclusion, and they called in experts multiple times, and the conclusion's been always been the same. I think it's been unanimous, my knowledge, that we need a new pool rather than repair it. And I would agree with that conclusion. It's not the news any of us want to hear, but it's, it's the truth, and they've brought that message to us, and they've fulfilled their responsibility.
Thank you.
As part of the Park Board, I just agree with everything that's been said, and just want to clarify one thing, and Denny started in on it, is that we've gone out and got experts to come in and evaluate that pool. And that's how we came to our realization that that pool has to be ground floor up and be rebuilt, a new pool. And I think we all come to that conclusion. Now, the big question.
I've got two over here.
Well, a couple of things I'd like to think about is, I've heard Chillicothe, and I get that, Curtis really needs a pool over there. Did you know it was refurbished? That wasn't built from the ground up. They refurbished that pool. I talked to the guy that did that at the MML meeting. They spent money to go in and repair and refurbish. So, when we're talking about these great pools, there's things that they can do to repair it and at a lower cost. As far as some of the other items, something else I looked up, I've been looking into a lot of this. There are things such as log rolls that are relatively inexpensive. You can put it, you know, like the logs that they used to do out of these, you can actually take those out whenever they're having a swim need or something like that as well. They have lily pads that are really, really inexpensive. Last about five years, but it's something for kids to play on. So, when, when I've heard these things before, I've, you know, I've kind of looked into it myself. The other thing that, well, there's two other things that I would like to just throw out. That when, and I don't remember the name of the company that came in, Drew, what's the name of the company again, that came back in here, the?
Larkin.
Larkin, thank you. I know when they came in this last time, they said, well, they were surprised that lo and behold, pool was in about the same shape it was the time before. So, it had been four to five years since they'd been here, and it was in the same shape. So, when I hear 10 years, I kind of wonder, is it really 10 or not? I don't know. I don't think anybody really knows. I do think the point of, do you repair and put the money into it or not, whether it's five years, 10 years, 15 years, I mean, that is still something to think through. But the, the one last thing that, that really kind of caught my attention was looking into some of the manuals and talking to some of the pool people at the MML meetings, I found some pools that weren't as expensive. Brand new, you could build them. I did get that to Rich, and I think Drew has those tonight. You can get a pool for under a million dollars. Now, is it gonna have all the bells and whistles? Nope. But sometimes in life, we, as I use today, sometimes we all, we want Lamborghinis. I would love to be able to have a little grabber and two or three really cool slides and everything. But the fact of the matter is, the town is running out of tacks that can be utilized. And I think we've been hit pretty hard with the taxes. We've got water rates that are going up and other things. So, if we can find another mechanism, I think it's wonderful, and I would, I would be glad to work with anybody on that. But I do want to at least think about, if you go down the replace direction, I'd like to at least look at some of the other pools that might be a little bit less expensive. Maybe, maybe you look at the million-dollar pool instead of a $5 million pool, and you throw in some lily pads and throw in, I mean, they had walls you could climb up, they were inexpensive. There was a lot of different things you could include with the pool to make it a more friendly place and get kids back out there. So, so I know I didn't really answer a pro or a con specifically, but I just, it was some information that I had found and just wanted to throw it out as, as a point.
Very helpful, thank you. Joe, I don't think you have a chance to speak yet.
Well, number one, I'm pro, I'm pro Park Board, I'm pro renewed diligence, I'm pro volunteerism, I'm pro seeing that this community thrives and survives and progresses. You know, it's called positive thinking, and I think the more positive we can be in a team atmosphere, the better. I think that, to be honest with you, the EDOC is available, if asked upon. You know, my, to my knowledge, we were asked upon to help several years ago. And so, it's all about helping, it's all about positive, it's all about doing all we can to make sure our kids, you know, have a positive culture. And there isn't any one more pro athletics than myself. So, I think, I think that Park Board has been studying this for five years, and I respect the business judgment of these individuals, and, and so, I think that, kudos to them, and try to help this community out with athletics and sports, so.
Okay. Thank you. Did I miss anyone? Or does anyone have anything that they, that they want to say that wasn't previously covered before we move on? Okay. For good, agenda item one only took us about 25 minutes, so we will, we'll see if we can bling the trail through the rest of these anyways. Next up is the agenda item is for funding options. Should we choose to repair the pool, or should we choose to replace the pool? Either one of those options are gonna require more funding than the Park Board currently has. So, the thought process here again was going back to the basics. Let's just, let's just throw on paper every single funding option that anyone has been able to think of, and again, let us pros and cons for each one of those funding options, and that's really all our task is tonight. So, again, we're just gonna go around the room. The first item up on the agenda is the possible use of a hotel tax to generate revenue. Could be used.
Before we get that started on the hotel tax, we're actually gonna have to just go ahead and skip it. And the city was authorized by statute to have a hotel tax in 1996. That was amended in 1998, and since then, the city, the classification for the city has not been read into the statute. So, at this point in time, the city cannot use, or might be, a hotel tax.
All right. How difficult would it be to petition, to have something added back?
Well, I don't, there's about 15 different cities that are currently on it, and the way that the legislature does it is we'll say, like, the previous one for Cameron was a city of the third class located in two counties, with one county having a township form of government that both touch a county in the first classification. That's Cameron's kind of descriptor that they use to make sure that Cameron's the only one that's in the league. And right now, there's about, I have the statute in front of me, there's eight, there are currently, eight cities that are currently on there. Obviously, they're all, most of it says a city of the third class, population of 7,000 to 7,500 can levy the tax. Right now, Cameron isn't in any of those, but we could, I know, contact your state rep, see if you can do something to have Cameron added to that. There's also another classification that is based on the hotel rooms, and right now, Cameron has 304 hotel rooms. So, you'd be able to levy the sales tax, Cameron would need 350 hotel rooms. So, I mean, it wouldn't even have to call the state rep with another hotel if you're up in the city, so.
It means if we add a hotel tax, you can build pool with it?
Yeah, there's another issue that it's not exactly clear whether or not the city can even use the hotel tax for the purpose of funding the pool. The statute 67-1,000 says it's for tourism convention centers. 67-1,300 says for the purpose of promoting tourism. Obviously, 67-1,300 is a little bit different. That's a little bit more of a broader grant authority to municipalities, but again, it's still a question whether or not, as we, as you guys have all discussed, people do seem to be going to Chillicothe to use their pools, so I would argue that that could be promoting tourism.
I would also, and I'm going from memory, this has been many years ago, but it seems like it was going to generate $50,000 or $75,000 worth of revenue. So, I think some sort of back-of-the-envelope calculation on, you know, because I don't know that if, even if we could get it through the legislature and could get it to be legal, which I, I mean, from what I understand, that's gonna be challenging.
Yeah.
I don't know that we would still have enough money to debt service it.
Yeah, 'cause you're capped at 5%, and then the other statute gives you 3%. So, obviously, a lot of your funding for the debt payments is... So obviously, a lot of your funding for the debt payments is based off of hotel guests. I'm not sure, I haven't looked at the revenue or the estimates yet, but I would say that's probably, you know, if you got to 350 or at 304 now, that would be difficult to raise the amount needed for the bond payments.
Okay.
I'm pretty familiar with the hotel tax. One of the problems that you have using that is that the hotels association, the tourism association are very well funded and they have extremely good lobbyists, know them very well. They are pretty well committed that that tax not be used for items of this nature. They will fight that in the legislature pretty hard. And so the odds of beating that, I guess, pretty bluntly, you would have to hire a pretty good lobby firm to represent you by several thousands of dollars. And, but they are committed that if something of that nature, and they have done this, if something of that nature comes up, they will, they will fight it. They want it to be used for proverbial heads and beds. They want, they want, the hotel group wants people in those beds. And if, if that money is used to promote that, then they're, they're not so much opposed to it. It's also a tax that still has to be passed.
Okay, that went a little out of, out of the words, so that's okay. Glad, glad to hear that. Is there anything else that anyone has to add to that before we move on?
Well, it's also failed in Cameron in the past. It's hard to remember that.
Okay. All right then. Next up would be item B there to apply for grants. Bill, do you mind if we start with you again?
I'm not going to add anything because I don't know what grant. I mean, if there's grants out there, it'd be great. I mean, we got a grant for the soccer complex. There are grants available, or sorry. There are grants available.
There are grants available out there for pools.
They are, they range anywhere from a couple thousand up to maybe 25,000. And they're hidden, you gotta dig and find them, but you can get online pretty quick and go search and find some grants available. The problem I see with the grants as an option is there's not enough grants. If we got every grant available to even make a drop in the bucket. In my mind, once we figure out the way we're going to fund this pool, then we apply for the grants, see what we can get to help offset costs or to add extra things that we don't have planned currently within our budget and use the grants for that way. But there's no grants that I've found, and welcome to me, anybody else to find one, that reaches over like around the 20, 25,000s a max. And those are usually like one town per year. The other grants put out by swimming associations of America or whatever, I think some people that do the Olympic team, and they give like $300,000 a year. But they break it out amongst, you know, a thousand towns or whatever, everybody gets a couple of grand. So they're, they're out there and they are accessible. I do think we would reach out and try to find those, but I think we've got to figure out the big picture first and use these to help offset or to add things to it.
More supplemental type thing.
We will continue on around. I, I took a little time to research the grants as well and I agree with everything that Jason said. The application processes are long, it's a lot of work. I'm not afraid of hard work, but, but the amount of money that you get from, from most of those grants doesn't make that big a difference. Could they make up? Could they make up a little bit here and there if we were, if we were short? Yes, certainly, but you still have to have the entire plan put together before you can.
My research, and that's from a few years ago, is the same thing that they said. It's been recent, but that's the same condition I would be given.
Like you said, not, not picking up your base of decision.
I'm all for grants. We try and buy them all over any time we get a chance, but at the end of the day, we want pool, we're going to have to make our own breaks. Can we utilize some grants? Sure. We're going to have to make our own breaks. Rich? Council of Budget?
Pretty much.
Looked through, same thing with the grant.
Mr. Bruce?
I echo the same statement.
All right. Next up then would be the use of special tax districts. Bill, I'm starting to hear every time.
That's fine. I try to think ahead. I will tell you that I do know that some cities have taxes that are, I mean, for instance, Carney with a new development they're having done with the Price Shopper. I just learned a couple of weeks ago, visiting with the, actually the mayor of Excelsior, trying to figure out how they funded their community center and things like that. It got brought up about Carney. They're actually got a 1% sales tax as part of, I imagine it's part of the TIP district where the Price Shopper and all that's going in. And that's how Carney's apparently getting a brand new pool. So, I mean, how you go about it, I couldn't, that's way beyond my expertise. But last I checked, I didn't see any major things going in the ground in Cameron, so that you could apply that too. And I am sure other communities have done the same thing.
I think Carney passed theirs about the time we lost ours. We had the election, we didn't pass and they did.
And I can't tell how accurate this is, but one, I think part of the developer of that Price Shopper, that whole area there, I think they actually had something to do with why a specific amount was going to the pool also. I didn't verify with anybody in Carney, but that's what I was told. So I actually took the developer's site, foresight to see that. Of course, he's probably got a kid on swim chamber coming after something. That's how those things work.
Yeah, for something like that, I'm just going to hop in. So go ahead. For like Carney building a pool, I do believe from memory, that Price Shopper is a combination TIP, TDD. And what you do when you enter into a TIP agreement with the developer, like what they did, is you can, in your performance agreement, say, hey, 1% of this goes to building the pool. That's probably what did occur. But obviously, to get to that point, you need a developer that's willing to enter into an agreement with you to say, yeah, that money that would be coming right back into my pocket, I'm finding that going out to the pool. Sometimes it's hard to find that type of developer. Developers like the bottom line as much as everybody else does, so that, but that is an option. But again, you have to find the right guy to get you that.
Okay, round we go. I got my answer. I'd like to hear that answer myself.
Well, there's, there's actually about three or four special taxing districts you can do, but they're, they all require the same thing. There's a vote. One, you can do a CID, which is a community improvement district. And then there's another one called an NID, which is neighborhood improvement district. And you can do that, but there again, that requires a vote of the district, of those involved in the district. And you gotta find the district that is agreeable to having a sales tax and a property tax or and or added to their, their situation. I've done, I've not done an NID, I've done CID's. It's not as easy as it sounds. And then you have to find a district also, remember, that has, that can generate the types of money. So you can't make the district part of the pool area because there's nothing out there to generate it. So you have to go somewhere else to generate the district and they have to be agreeable. One of, one of the deals, you have to be agreeable that it's positive for you. But again, you have to go to an area that's going to generate that amount of money. And that itself is, is, which one's a bit difficult. The only other one is you could also do a TIP and you can go, you can, and this, you can set up a TIP and send it somewhere else. And there's no say. The problem there is again, that Martin being able to answer this better than anybody, I don't know what increase your city sales tax is. But you only get 50% of the new net sales tax. So it would have to be pretty substantial to fund, fund the pool. And then you can have 100% of the property tax. But there again, then you have the school situation and that would only be 100% of the new net. Last time I checked, cities weren't tearing it up on increasing net sales tax or, or increase of the property tax.
And the other issue with the CID is, CID's are limited on where their improvements can come from, like where they can place their improvements. It has to be within the district. So you'd have to have a pretty substantially large district because, like Terry said, you'd have to include the pool area just so that they could, you know, use their funds for the pool. Then you would have to include a big enough area that could generate the 1% sales tax. I think it's a cap at 1%. Yeah. 1% sales tax within the CID to then fund that area, but you also then again have a dead area that's not generating the sales tax. So then again, you're going to, it's going to be a pretty substantially larger CID that, you know, a lot of property owners are going to balk at the idea. Because I think for CID only 50% of the property owners within the district, but you still have a hard time convincing that many businesses that 1% sales tax for a pool.
Thank you. Very education. So we need to continue on.
All I know is that Carney, the last I did research on Carney is that they haven't built ground yet for their pool. So they're still trying to get the money collected to look at that. So the process, it's not a, it's not a slam dunk.
And in those performance agreements, the problem that you do have is there's always, developers not getting entered into a performance agreement without having like a penalty or just an out so that they don't have to perform. So I, you know, we have, we've set up TIPS where we require that you can't, you know, take a business from another part of the city and put it right into the TIP because you're not doing anything, you're cannibalizing business within the city. But then the developer's like, well, I want to be able to do that, but I have to pay a $40,000 fine if I do. And then guess what? The developer, if they need to, if their tip's not developing like they want, they're just going to eat that $40,000 and they just pay $40,000. Obviously, you can make the penalty whatever you want, but it also has to be agreed upon.
One other problem that you have with that is that, again, you have to show where you can generate that income. Because when you do that, you're going to have to sell bonds. And when you sell bonds, obviously you lose part of it, which is a natural, remember, bond scenario that they have. But the other part of that is, the less likely that that's going to generate the money, the less likely you are to sell those bonds. So that, that itself becomes a problem. They don't mind bonding Walmart.
Yeah.
They don't mind bonding Lowe's, but they have a tendency after that to be, well, we'll see.
Do the counties enter into this also?
It would depend. I think in this situation, if it was like a TIP or a CID that was wholly within, within Cameron, didn't go into Cobb or Clinton or Caldwell, depending on where the pool's built, I don't think that the county would be involved in this situation. There would be a taxing district that may lose money, so they may fight you on the TIP, just like a school district may fight you on the TIP, just because you're, you're taking, essentially when you limit the property tax, school districts only get their money from property taxes. So that's why you see all the problems with that are currently arising in the state of Missouri, where school districts are fighting TIP pretty hard just because they want money to be able to get computers in the classroom to help fund stuff.
I appreciate your guys' wealth of knowledge, but you make this sound very gentle.
One of the things in the past initiatives that the location of the pool has always been a really big item, which has somewhat limited the options that we just talked about. Okay. Does that, we may not know that, I think that's given. Okay. Do you find any? Rich? Council of Budget?
No, sir.
Okay. Go. Okay. We'll call that one. We're about halfway through our time. I have way too many to do, so I think, I think we're doing okay. Next up is an idea that came up at the last, at the last park, park board meeting and I thought it deserved a decent conversation here tonight. The idea was to borrow funding from city council. The suggestion was that there may be some, some money there to borrow and that it, that it could be paid back. So some folks may have pros and cons about this tonight that you could, that you could speak here. We'll just take turns, see what those are.
On something like that, personally, I would leave it up to the council. I mean, I don't analyze the city budget, so I don't know where they would ever stand on that. So I do know that park boards used to borrow money every year from the council. I don't think we've ever paid it back. That arrangement, we could do that shit.
You want to get that in the minutes?
It has been several years since we've done that. But council used to be really generous too, it's about 15, 16 years ago, so. But that's, that's a different matter, so, but I, I couldn't, I don't have anything, I don't know where the city's financial status is even to that.
Yeah, I was going to say, if money is available and it's feasible, then definitely an option to look at, but again, I do not know if that's the case.
Thank you. One of the conversations of the council.
I was skipping over that part. One of the conversations that, that we had after that that came up was if that's available, then could we go back and just do our current needs and sales tax, make it longer? We can't bond our current needs and sales tax big enough to pay off a pool in 20 years. But if we were paying back the city, if that was something that was available, could we, could we have that sales tax for over 30 years or 40 years or whatever we're paid to pay that money back to the city with that current needs and without that, that's a second option. So I think that was kind of the way I had put it in my head, if it was a possibility, but back to Bill, I really leave that up to council.
Okay.
Well, you, you said it, I'll, I'll leave a little bit.
I haven't seen the structure of this deal come up before, but for the city council to loan money to the park board, what it more sounds like to me is a, a general obligation bond. Because at, at some point, you're still going to need money upfront to build the pool. And, you know, general obligation bonds have their pros and cons because.
And they're governmental.
Yeah. And just like what you get is it's a, it's a general obligation bond. That's, you know, most of the time when cities do bonds, it's a, it's a revenue bond or, you know, it's based off of the sales tax that they're letting. It's not coming directly from. I don't know enough about that type, that sort of situation to really provide any more than that.
Just more revenue source payment.
Okay. Now, that's, that's up to the city manager to, to work out. I know with, there's, there's a reason for those funds to be, be there. Basically, first things, planning for each department and there's a purpose for it. And knowing that, you know, something happens, disasters or whatever, I think we all know as we're setting here, we're selling one fund, it has quite a bit of money there. And that's not a secret to anyone, but because all it takes is one storm and that's gone plus. So why, why would you ever complete, if, if you, if you use it here and something happens, you're going to have to go borrow whatever there. So you're in the same position. Let the project stand on its own and, and don't dwindle the, the city's cash reserves in all their departments to make it happen. Okay, I have nothing to add right now. Mike said it. Okay.
I have to echo the same thing. Parks, the park board can't pay it back. If they pay it back the day since that they've got now, then there's nothing, nothing left for maintenance or repairs on any of the parks. It's going to take it in cash, even if the city did, was able to take the money in. And as Mike said, I mean, yeah, the park board, I mean, no, park board, yeah. Electric's sitting there on close to $5 million, but one major storm. Uh, electric's sitting around close to $5 million, but one major storm and, and one transformer, the way I understand, we got a couple transformers that stand under a million bucks. If one of them blows, I mean, I hope the hell they stay there for another 20 years. But that's the reason that fund has that money. And Mike said, don't have, if you don't have a funding stream, that a cent won't pay it back, which, uh, I think was said in the last meeting, is 40 years to pay it back. I mean, that's not even an option.
Thank you.
I, I would agree. I wouldn't see it as a viable option. I think the pools generally last 30, 35 years is kind of an average. Am I right on that?
Uh, I could just take some of the research that my wife has had done 10 years ago. The average pool life was about 30 years. I mean, we're talking 35 on this one now.
I mean, this one stretches out to 40 years. I mean, there's a fairly good chance we'd be paying on a, on a hole in the ground. And I, I, I don't think that, yeah, you can make a loan on something that can't pay it back, and you would be committing. There's a difference between borrowing for a short-term fix or pulling $30,000 out to help the park board like they did 15 years ago, or whatever the number was, out of a general fund and great for them. I, I wouldn't see it as a viable option.
I would agree with that.
Mayor?
Well, of course, it seems like it's always on the other side over here. I, I had seen, and I don't know, um, all the ins and outs yet, but I've seen money in our budget go from one section to another, being utilized. Uh, we do have the eight cent sales tax. We do have the property tax, so there are funding sources back. But I'm not even, I'm not even sure that the person, or me, was, was saying use it all. I'm saying that could be something that could be put in there, uh, so you're not required to go out and ask for a half a cent. If, if the decision is to go down and ask for any tax, you could ask for a little less, borrow off that. But, um, from a standpoint of seeing money's move around, I've seen it, so, um, I, I guess I'm not as afraid of moving funds, and if there was an emergency, um, you know, if the transformer blows for a million bucks, we've got five in there. If, because I could use the argument, well, five could blow, and then we wouldn't have any money. So, um, the likelihood of either is, is probably pretty small, but there are some funding sources. And I, I think we need to look at a lot of these different areas and combine. I, I don't think that any single revenue source should be ruled out. So with a combination of such, we could probably get pretty close to, to doing what you want. But that's just me.
Thank you. Joe?
I respect city council. Their, their decision.
Anyone have anything final to add to that? Anyone I missed? Alright then, um. Next up, item E here, um, is something, this really hasn't been around for a long time. Uh, this would be a combination of, um, a, a massive donation drive, uh, to raise funds that would go along with the remaining 1/8 cent sales tax that, uh, parks could, could put on ballot to be voted on by the public, uh, that is available by the parks and stormwater statute in the state of Missouri. Actually, before we started, I did invite Mary Jo here tonight. Mary Jo has a lot of experience in raising funds, um, recently, um, for her efforts in, in building the new YMCA. So I think, Mary Jo, if you don't mind sharing with us a little about your experience, um, and what that involves.
And the fundraising aspect?
Yeah.
It's very similar to the grants. We've talked about, um, the grants, and there's $5,000 here, and there's $10,000 there. Sorry, I don't know where to go on this. With, with the fundraising for the YMCA, it was a combination of grants, but they were small grants. And your success rate when you write grants, they say, if you get 30% of the grants that you write, you are at a very high success rate. Uh, because those grants are very competitive out there. Foundations, if you look at foundations for fundraising, uh, the foundations are very limited in our area. A lot of foundations are very localized for certain counties in the Kansas City, St. Louis area, metropolitan area, and they have passionate, uh, projects that they basically give to. Swimming pools, I don't know. Would fall under recreation and youth. There's a lot of funds out there, but a lot of foundations have become very localized, um, for those types of things. Uh, with our fundraising for the Y, we did acquire tax credits. Um, but as a municipality, you're not eligible for, um, tax credits, I don't believe. But I'm not familiar with the municipality or the for-profit side of it. 501(c)(3)'s and nonprofits can't apply for tax credits, and we have those 70% tax credits. I can honestly say if we did not have those tax credits, we would not have been as successful as we were. Uh, businesses really, really like those 70% of tax credits, as, as businesses do. Fundraising is difficult here because we do not have large industries that can give half a million dollar gifts to kick off your campaign. In fact, there are a lot of YMCA's that do not expand and cannot expand because they do not have that capability in their community. So our donations were $5 here, $100 there, um, grants. It, it was a lot of hard work. It was three years worth of work to come together with that, and we didn't raise all of the money we needed for our project. We had to debt finance it, um, a portion of that. So, um, it's, it's not easy.
Thank you. Are you able to tell us how much money you were able to raise through those efforts?
Uh, we raised right at about 1.2 million. And then we had to di, debt finance the rest of the project. We worked on it three years, and we're still working on it, honestly. Uh, but there's a lot, there's matching grants out there where certain foundations will ask you to raise X amount before you can even go to them and ask for funding. Uh, but the foundations are really the, the toughest ones because there's really nothing around this area. There's not a lot, a lot of large family or manufacturing foundations. There's a lot of foundations out there for, you know, manufacturing, but they have to have a presence in your community in order for you to even apply for funding from there. So I don't mean to sound negative about it, but it's, it's, it's a tough way to go.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your.
And it's a huge volunteer effort.
Mary Jo, are you using in-house, uh, grant writers?
Uh, yes, myself.
Yes, and it's very difficult.
Yes, it is. It's very time-consuming. Like I said, it's, it's reaching out and searching, researching those grants, being able to find out what the funder wants, um, and asking for those funds. And again, they're very limited as to being able to reach this part of our, we're, we're kind of in, in an area that there are not a lot of foundations. And if they are, they're not huge foundations.
Do you know, again, how much of that 1.2 was tax credits?
Uh, 500,000. 550,000, sorry, those tax credits. That's the amount of money that we were able to raise through those tax credits.
Anybody have any other questions for Mary Jo?
Would you be, I was today taking a pool?
I know where you're going. I did not have much fun, and I'm not having much fun with this. These three were part of the real project.
You did such a great job of raising the money. I was just thinking, maybe we can just give you a pool.
It's a, it's a lot of volunteer time and a lot of efforts. Um, I've had people ask me about outside council coming in and hiring outside fundraising groups. Um, those companies are available. They're out there, but they also take a percentage of your funds that you raise, and they may take 10, 12, 15% right off the top before they even start. And they spend a lot of time coming in and getting to know your community, getting to know your funders. When we already are in a small enough environment, we know the funders, we know their wants, their desires. So you're paying for a group to come in and tell you something you probably already knew. But those options are available, but they're expensive.
Again, thank you, Mary Jo. Appreciate those. Okay, uh, we will go around then, and any other pros and cons for?
I'm gonna counter, uh, combine my response with the E and the F. I mean, I've stated I'm, I'm very open-minded to ideas, so I'm not set in stone that one of the things that I personally would have trouble doing would be to try to either utilize the rest of the eight cent sales tax, stormwater, and/or combine it with the other eight cent sales tax that's available to the city. Uh, and my reasoning with that is, is kind of what we discussed with the electric department. Also takes is one major need with the city, for them to have to go to the voters with one of those taxes that's left. There's not a whole lot left, and it's only quarter cent sales tax, and that really does not generate a whole lot of funds. So as a park board member, I would have trouble even going to council and say, hey, let's go ahead and give it to the voters and utilize the rest of the city's available funds. Because what if voters, oh, yeah, I want a pool, great, but didn't really think about the consequences of what could happen? So I would err on the side of being conservative and not ask the city for that. And as far as I know too, we still got about 20 years of everything that's currently being taxed before anything becomes available. For, you know, that's already been voted on. So, and the other thing is too, is that, you know, we mentioned our current needs and sales tax. I would not really wanna apply any of that, or very little, I should say, to the pool other than just general maintenance, because what we've done over the last 16 years is improve our facilities that we have. And without that money that we have, they would go right back to what they were in the late 90s when we got that tax. Because we wouldn't be applying any money to anything that needs to be up, you know, have the upkeep. So, um, I would just have a hard time. And then the other thing to keep in mind, both eight cent sales tax would be different votes, so they both would have to pass. Or you wouldn't be able, you wouldn't be able to fund it. So, I mean, that's where I stand on at this point, and nobody's convincing otherwise. So.
Well, I agree. I don't want to put the city in a, in a bad position or low on fund, it's a very shitty reason, especially, I mean, that's, that's a commodity. This far as fundraising, that's gonna be a tall task, but I don't, I don't think it's gonna take a whole lot.
Uh, with, with regards to fundraising, again, it sounds more like a supplemental type thing that we discussed before, that if we can find some other way to mainly fund it, if we can supplement, um, since we're combining E and F. As far as the F agenda with the two eight cent sales tax, I personally have no problem asking the council. They know their budget better than we do. They can, they can spare that second eighth, and that's up to them to make that decision. And they can tell us yes or no, but I have no problem going and asking them for it, and let them tell us what they think. Terry had a lead. She had another meeting.
I'll just say, I will continue to be hopeful, but I don't like the idea of leaning out in front of Walmart. Trying to, they don't make me.
They don't have to buy the voice downs.
Sounds like how many times I walked by.
He started, yeah. Bill started it.
Fund, fundraising, I have nothing to add. Um, I think Mary Jo for coming in, that's helpful to understand the, the monies that were raised and how they were raised. As far as the F, I'm, I'm along with Jennifer. Um, I, I disagree. I, I think that our job as park board is to throw out whatever options are available and let council look at their budget and tell us that that is not a good idea. It's not something I'm gonna do. So from that standpoint, um, I am willing to, to take it, counsel, and ask for both eight cents taxes.
The only thing on Mary Jo, doesn't the tax credit have to go to the approval through legislature? Isn't it getting a little more difficult each time to get, get that through?
The legislature looks at very, very hard every year as to what tax credits are out there, what tax credits are available.
So I think, you know, it is an option, but it's, it's, uh, it's getting more difficult, you know, when I've been down there. And, uh, so I'd, I'd be concerned about that.
And the tax credits are very much like a.